I'll call this meeting into order, and if you can join me with the flag salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Stephen, if you could do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Amon. Commissioner Christensen. Commissioner Hallie.
Here.
Vice Chair Nichols.
Here.
Chair Kine.
Here.
Thank you. At this moment, I would like to open public comment. Please note that anything that you speak about today in public comment cannot be on today's agenda, but you're welcome to speak about anything else, and you'll have a time limit of three minutes. Stephen, is there anybody online?
No one online.
Is there anybody in the chamber who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, then I will close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. It looks like the consent calendar is just approving the June 24th Planning Commission minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from June 24. June 24th, 25, 2025.
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, all right. Then moving on to current business. The first item of business is a minor subdivision of Assessor Parcel Number 202-381-048, Planning Commission Resolution P-2025-3128, and I will turn it over to Sherry.
Good evening, Chair Kine and honorable commissioners. I'm Sherry Meads, the Community Development Director, and we are indeed here to talk about the Ambrosini Minor Subdivision. And I also want to highlight the fact that we do have Matt Nyberg here, who is our Deputy City Engineer, should there be any questions in his purview, and we have our building official here in case there are questions in his purview, but let's just get started. So this project divides, subdivides, an undeveloped 0.76-acre parcel into two residential parcels, and that is what the project is, and also to find the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. You can see here that it's an undeveloped lot at the end of Berry Creek Avenue, which is in the central area of the city, surrounded by some residential uses and then additional vacant land. The general plan land use designation for the site is residential loa, which allows single-family detached homes and other similar compatible uses. Residential densities are intended to range from 3 to 6.9 units per gross acre. The table below provides the density per gross acre that will occur as a result of this proposed subdivision. And it's important to note that the general plan references density per net acre, whereas, I'm sorry, per gross acre, whereas density per net acre is how the zoning regulations utilize the density calculation. And the density per gross acreage is the entire site, even areas that are not buildable due to wetlands, easements, or other types of things. So when you look at it per the general plan, it shows a much lower density, less than three units per acre, but when you actually factor in the developable and buildable land, it's 4.83 and 3.3, which is still lower than the general plan land use designation, but it's certainly higher than what it is now. There's absolutely no development on it, so. The zoning district is the residential single-family zone, and that is also another zone that is, intends to be single-family dwellings typically on lots between 6,000 and possibly 10,000 square feet. It's areas where there are existing single-family homes to protect and for the development of new neighborhoods of single-family homes. This is the zoning, the implementing zoning district for the RL general plan land use, and both lots created by the minor subdivision do meet the R16 development standards and requirements, so the project is compliant. Here's a picture of the tentative map as proposed. You can see parcel one and parcel two. Parcel one is a, I need to move this, 0.3, 0.38 gross acre parcel. Parcel two is very similar in size, just slightly larger. Both of the parcels do have, as I mentioned, delineated wetlands, which reduce the developable areas to what is shown here on the slide, 9,000 net square feet for parcel one and over 13,000 for parcel two. Parcel two already has city water and sewer connections. Parcel one will require new connections. So in order to approve a tentative parcel map, we have to make these certain findings. And I'm not going to go through each one of them. What I will say is that the project has been evaluated by city staff in different departments and has been found to meet all of the requirements for approval. The project is exempt from CEQA because that parcel was identified in the city's general plan, EIR, Environmental Impact Report, for the use that is proposed, and the proposed development does not, it's not higher than what was expressed in the EIR. So staff does recommend that the planning commission approve the project with the conditions of approval that are included in the resolution. So I asked the planning commission to ask any questions of me, open public comment, close public comment, and then we'll take it from there. And I'm here for any questions, along with Matt and our building official, Gary Goad.
Thank you, Sherry. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
This will about secondary units, right?
Meaning like accessory dwelling units? Absolutely.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions before I open it to public comment?
I do not.
Okay, at this moment, I will open public comment. Is there anybody online?
No one online.
Is there anybody in the chamber who'd like to speak? Please come up, make sure that the microphone is on, and please state your name.
Susan Leroy, and I live right next to parcel two. And I'm only here basically just to ask a couple of questions. There is a spring that borders my property and parcel two that is constantly emitting water year-round. And I'm wondering how that would affect building on that lot. And also, I don't, I don't know if Mr. Ambrosini is here, but I was wondering if this is being subdivided in order to resell it. Does anybody know? Do both lots up for sale?
Chair Kine, would you like?
Do the chair a yes if you can answer that question and if.
The city isn't aware, but the city wouldn't need to be aware.
Okay, mostly because I think it was purchased about two years ago, and since then, it's been used as commercial storage. There's a bobcat on it, backhoe, piles of debris, a broken-down trailer, another broken-down trailer, and a broken-down van. I purchased my property and built, I was the first person in that subdivision when Perry Dove developed it. And I didn't buy that too and build a home there to look out my living room window and see that stuff constantly every day. And so I'm just hoping that that can be addressed while they're subdividing and that the residential, the zoned residential be enforced. That's basically what I'm here for. Okay?
Thank you.
Any questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once I close public comment, we'll come back. Does anybody else have any?
Good evening. Guys, my name's Abe Stevens. I own the property immediately south of this parcel. I am in favor of the subdivision. I think Fortuna needs more housing units and, you know, increasing a couple more units, especially in, you know, kind of the city, maybe not the downtown, but kind of a central area, you know, walking distance, a safe way and shopping and stuff, I think is an appropriate spot to see a few more houses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nobody else, I will close public comment. And then I will move through the chair to our engineer.
I just wanted to speak to the question about the spring. Each of those lots that were actually, that one is one of three from a previous subdivision of the property. Each of those lots have to have a geotech soils report done before any construction can happen.
Does anybody else have any questions as I bring it back to the board?
So, a geotech has to approve the house, and is that because of your wetlands and stuff like that also?
Could you repeat that?
No, that's fine.
Could you repeat that?
The springs that she's talking about, I drove out to the side, looked at it and everything.
Can you please turn on your microphone? Can you please make sure your microphone's on?
Why was I pressing? I, the springs and the wetlands. I saw somebody had mowed into the wetlands, into part of it, and I assume I've never, I understand wetlands, and I understand that you have something that is, you know, that can separate the wetlands from it, the springs. So somebody is subdividing the property and will not know if they can build on it until they do a geotechnical test.
Yes.
And I believe that there's code enforcement if they are, have a lot of trash on the property or something like that that can help you out there. Thank you, that's it.
If there are no more questions, I entertain a motion.
So moved. Do you have to read the thing in the title?
Yes, please. Section A, the minor subdivision.
I move to approve the minor subdivision of Assessor's Parcel Number 202-381-048, Planning Commission, Planning Commission Resolution P-2025-3128.
Second.
A resolution of the Fortuna Planning Commission approving with conditions a tentative parcel map to subdivide Assessor's Parcel Number 202-381-048, a 0.76-acre parcel into two 0.38-acre parcels and finding the project to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Commissioner Amon.
Upper roof.
Commissioner Christensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Vice Chair Nichols.
Yes.
Chair Kine?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to the next item of business, a conditional use permit to allow a warehouse/ wholesale land use design review of proposed exterior modifications of an existing structure at 103 12th Street and allowing a two-years to vest the entitlement under Resolution P-2025-3132 and Resolution P-2025-3131. Sherry, would you like to walk us through this one, please?
Yes, that was a mouthful, and that's exactly what we're doing. So tonight, again, I'm Sherry Meads, the Community Development Director, in case you're just joining. Tonight, there are two requests, so there are two actions that are, will be requested of you. One is to approve a conditional use permit. That has to come first because we're asking if we can change a use on a site that had been a principally permitted automotive services shop into a warehouse and wholesale with a small retail component. So that'll be the first action. We'll need you to approve that conditional use permit, then we'll move into a resolution that is for the design review. The staff report and presentation kind of lumps it all together because it is one project, it is one site, but at the end, we will need two separate motions for two separate resolutions. So as mentioned, the first thing we're going to look at is that the applicant has requested to allow a warehouse and wholesale land use with a small retail component at a site that it requires a conditional use permit. So, and then after that, once, if that is approved, the code requires in the commercial thoroughfare zone that a change of use in a commercial structure requires design review for exterior modifications. And as mentioned, the applicant is requesting two years to vest the entitlements due to potential rain issues and financial issues. So the project is at, near the intersection of 12th and Newburgh Road, so many of us know it as the former Mike's Brake and Front End Automotive Services Shop. It's right next to Paul's Live from New York and kind of kitty-corner across the way from Clinton Insider Work. The general plan land use designation for the site is commercial, and so the commercial designation provides for neighborhood and locally-oriented commercial centers that may include retail and service center, service uses and a bunch of other things, and similar and compatible uses. So this will be a retail use, and then the warehouse and manufact, the warehouse and wholesaling will also be related to the retail use. The zoning district is commercial thoroughfare, which is an implementing zoning district of the commercial general plan land use. As mentioned before, the warehousing and wholesale use requires a conditional use permit, and the retail use is permitted by right. So this is what the building currently looks like. It's got those two big garage bay doors, which were very appropriate when it was an automotive services center. The side looks like this, not much proposed to change there. There will be a delineated ADA path of travel from the sidewalk to that back door, which will serve as the front entrance to the retail shop. So here is the amazingly hand-drawn by the applicant, Dan Bellamy's site plan. It shows the existing building, it shows each of the parking spaces, it shows that ADA path of travel. And then at the bottom part of the, of the plan page is the rendering of what the front of the building will look like. So the project does include exterior alterations to an existing already-developed building, these parking lot improvements, including striping and ADA parking, as mentioned. So now we're going to look a little bit more at what the building will look like. The base color proposed is the brown. It's very hard to see this, obviously, and there will be white trim. It's going to be hardy board. He's going to fill in the garage bay doors and then do horizontal hardy board with some trim for a consistent look across the front of the building. As mentioned several times now, the warehouse and wholesale use requires a use permit, and some of the findings that we have to make are reflected in these statements. The size of the building is not changing, and the new use will actually generate less vehicular traffic than if probably some of us recall Mike's Brake and Front End, there was always cars all different directions and, and that type of thing. So this will be, the, the spots are delineated, there's one compact, there's three standard, there's an ADA space. So it's going to be much easier for maneuverability and accessibility. The project will not emit noxious or offensive emotions, emotions, yes, that too. Excuse me, emissions such as noise, glare, dust, or odor. And the proposed use will not be detrimental to the general fair, welfare of residents working or around there. And in fact, it could be something that hopefully leads to some sales tax for the city and just a nice place for people to visit, whether locals or folks coming in right off Highway 12, Highway 2, 12th Street. So design review, like I mentioned, design review is required for modifications of commercial structures in the commercial thoroughfare zone. And these modifications are definitely going to improve the building's aesthetics. They are going to, as mentioned, improve the parking situation. There's going to be a 25-foot drive aisle to ensure that cars are able to maneuver within the parking lot well, and it provides an ADA path of travel, as mentioned, from the right-of-way to the building entrance, which currently there is nothing like that, so it's a good thing. So one of the things that is required for design review is typically providing a landscape plan, and the applicant instead is proposing the installation of redwood tree sculptures on the building in place of living landscaping. And that is due to the, it's not required if it would impede access. And because of the way the parking lot is situated, the applicant felt that it wouldn't, first of all, be, it would be a hardship for him to maintain it, and second of all, it could impede visibility and/or the ability for, for cars to easily maneuver. And the sculptures, and I'll go back and show them to you, it's pretty clever. The, the retail shop is going to sell things that reflect, that are made from redwood and also reflect our lovely area. So I'll show you, I'll go back to it, and it's probably kind of hard to see here, but as you can see, I don't know if you've seen my cursor, but there's, there's three of, three of the sculptures down here on the bottom right showing of the building. And the placement is, is flexible. He's, you know, considering putting more across the way, that type of thing, but that gives you an idea of what he is at planning to do, and there will be not less than three. So there won't be less than, there would, there would only be more than. There's no exterior light with this because there is already adequate street lighting, lighting from the streetlight that's right there, and there is already an existing light over the front door to the building. And he's not anticipating it being open past 5:00. And so therefore, I think even in the winter months, it wouldn't be dark by that time. So the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act for several reasons. I'm not going to go through all of them, but it's obvious that it would not impact the environment. So as I mentioned, there are actually two actions. So whether you want to open comment and close com, public comment for each one, or do public comment all at once and then do two separate actions, I defer to you. But they will need to be two separate actions, and if there are any additional modifications to the design or changes or anything like that, they wouldn't, that would need to be read in when we're approving or voting on that particular resolution. Is that clear as mud?
Yes.
And I'm here if you have any questions. And we also have Gary Goad, who is our excellent helper with design review stuff and worked with the applicant on the parking lot stuff.
Thank you, Sherry. Does anybody on the council have any questions for staff before we open public comment?
Is the, is the roundabout that's going in there going to affect these parking lots at all, since they're right there at the intersection?
If anything, it should make it easier. Because right now, that access is very challenging where people come swooping in from the highway, you know, that exit, and then quickly turning in from, from Newburgh. So it should improve things, if anything.
That's a great question. I question the, the three driveways. I believe there is three driveways, just two? Okay, because it is a quagmire at that intersection. The roundabout will probably eliminate some of it, but the other question I have is on design review. I love the idea of the redwood trees. I love the idea that he's going to be doing something like that, but I would like to see some green in there. And he could do it in planter boxes, he could do it, I'm not saying it has to be totally landscaped, but I, it's, you know, it's a nondescript building, and it needs just a touch of flash. And I think he will like it if he does it, because I think it needs it, so. My opinion.
If I may? So there is in the resolution, if you look at condition of approval number two, it says the applicant shall consider adding and maintaining living landscaping in areas that do not impede access or visibility. We could remove the word "consider" and just say that it has to be done. But I would need you to.
We, yeah, we'd have to vote on, on the condition.
Thank you.
All right, at this moment, then, I'd like to open it up to the public. If there's anybody who would like to speak, is there anybody currently online?
No one online.
Okay, and then I'd like to open it up to the chamber. Would you like to speak? Of course.
I saw, I saw a blip on this on Lost Coast Outpost, and I think it's absolutely amazing. I've had many visitors from out of this area who've come and stayed with me, and there's no place to buy Fortuna souvenirs that, that are handcrafted and, and nice, not just junk. And I think that's what they're planning to sell, and I'm 100% behind this one.
Thank you. All right, then at this time, I will close public comment. And I think if there's anything that wants to be changed, I will do the, look for any last comments regarding both topics, and then we will take the motion separately. Is there anything else anybody would like to mention?
I agree with the last speaker. I think that we really need something homemade in Fortuna.
Okay. That is all, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll go ahead and move motion on the conditional use permit. Move to approve conditional use permit to ally warehouse, wholesale, land use, design. I want to do the design review separately.
Yeah, that's separate, yeah.
Okay. Of proposed exterior modifications of the existing structure at 103 12th Street and allowing two years to vest the settlement. And I would like to make the mod.
That'll, that'll be the second part as well.
Okay.
If I may, that condition is included in both resolutions, so it is important to include if that, we do want to move forward with that, that it would remove the "consider."
Oh, okay, well, and then if that's the case, you can make a motion to, to remove that. We can vote on that and then move to the.
I make a motion, I mean, I add to my motion to remove that condition and bring it back up in design review.
Anybody second?
I will second that, sorry.
Yeah.
So again, that is to, to remove the word "to consider" the landscaping for the conditional use permit, and that would be a requirement.
We can do it either way. We can completely remove it if it's easier. Just remove that from the conditional use permit. It's no longer a condition, it's no longer a shall, and make it a shall in the design review, either way.
Okay, so the motion.
She said to remove it, and so we can just remove it from the conditional use permit resolution.
Okay, so we don't need to vote on that portion, then?
You do need to vote on it with that condition removed. And, and then when we do the design review, we're going to just remove that word.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So I will, I can rephrase the motion. The motion on the table is to approve the conditional use permit with the condition that landscaping do take part, or is part of the condition. So that was the motion, is there a second? Do you still agree, Sherry?
I second that.
Yeah, okay.
A resolution of the Fortuna Planning Commission approving with conditions a conditional use permit for a warehouse/ wholesale land use located at 103 12th Street, a two-year vesting period for the entitlement, and finding the project to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Including a modification of condition of approval number two to remove the word "consider," so that number two now reads the applicant shall add and maintain living landscaping areas that do not impede access or visibility.
Commissioner Amon? Commissioner Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Chair Kine?
Yes.
Thank you. And since we have already heard the presentation, I would make a motion, or look for a motion to approve the design review with the amended notation.
I'll move that motion forward.
I second.
A resolution of the Planning Commission approving with conditions design review for exterior modifications and parking lot improvements at 103 12th Street, a two-year vesting period for the entitlement, and finding the project to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and including.
Modification to condition of approval number two, so that it shall read, "The applicant shall add and maintain living landscaping in areas that do not impede access or visibility."
Commissioner Amon?
Yes.
Commissioner Christensen?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Chair Kine?
Yes. Thank you very much. And then moving on to our last item of the evening, Planning Commission Staff Communications.
Not much for me. It does look like we will be canceling our next meeting, and hopefully we'll have something to bring to you, to the meeting after that.
If there's nothing else, I motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Thank you, everybody.